Good evening and welcome back to the 2024 Town Hall Debate. We are at our spring debate here at the beautiful Community and Senior Center here in the jewel of the valley, the community center. This event is hosted by the Business Council of Douglas County, the Tahoe Chamber, the Carson Valley Chamber, The Record Courier, and Brian Kopa Photography. The second half of our debate will feature the candidates for county commission. It's a very important job, and they have prepared for quite some time for this evening. We have worked with them for the last many weeks in preparing for the debate, and we thank them all for all of their hard work and willing to run. I would like to introduce our moderators. We have District Court Judge Gregory, and we have James Settlemeyer. Thank you, gentlemen, both very much. I'm going to welcome up the candidates here in just a moment. We, in the first round, had recognized the elected officials that we knew were attending and had joined us this evening. We have spotted a few more that may have come in after that announcement. I'd like to recognize elected officials. Bill Charnock of the Gardinerville Board. Where's Bill? I saw him. Yvonne Wagstaff, School Board. I apologize, clearly she was here, and we knew that, and I don't know how she wasn't on the list that I read. That's my fault. We also have Linda Gilkerson, School Board Member here. Thank you for your service as well, all those years. And, of course, Michael Tanner. I think we've caught everybody that is an elected official in the room, and if not, please let us know. With that, I will turn it over. Ladies and gentlemen, please enjoy the second half of our evening with the county commissioner debate. Enjoy.
Good evening, everybody. These candidates have ensured us that they understand the rules, and we don't need to read them again, so thank you for that. Also, I know you have not come to hear from me, so we're going to kick this off right away and have these candidates introduce themselves. We're going to start with Mr. Tolbert.
Actually, other way, other way. It's actually Gardner.
Other way? All right. My apologies, Mr. Gardner, Commissioner Gardner.
Thank you, Your Honor. Good evening, and first of all, I wish to thank you for allowing me to serve you as a county commissioner this past three and a half years. It's truly been an honor and a privilege. If you take a look at the back of my rack card, which is available on the back table, you'll see both my record and my platform. I believe that I've lived up to what I said I'd do four years ago. Let's be safe, let's be sound, let's be rural, and that remains my pledge to you. A safe community, no increases in taxes not voted on directly by you, and growth only where it is appropriate with respect to the master plan.
Hi, my name is Brian Dempsey. I've lived in Gardinerville for 27 years. I moved here from Sacramento because I couldn't deal with the city life anymore, and I wanted a rural lifestyle. I am committed to slowing the growth in the county. I am committed to getting better infrastructure, better roads. I'm committed to getting better funding for our sheriff's department, so we're not losing deputies who are making less pay to other cities and counties. And I'm committed to working for better emergency preparedness for our county. Thank you.
I'm James McCallum. I'm currently chairman of the largest DID in Nevada, the Gardinerville Ranchos. We've done many projects. I've done a lot of good things with a great board and a great staff. The Ranchos, things that'll last the next 50 years. It's what you get when a staff and a good board work together. I've been attending commissioner meetings for about seven years, reading the packet, maybe making public comment for the record on issues such as growth and public safety. I'm on the Board of Equalization. I've been appointed and reappointed. That's my sixth year. I am the outgoing chairman of the Douglas County Republican Party, serving 20,000 Republicans in Douglas County. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Janet Frakesis. I am running for Commissioner, District Five. I have lived in Douglas County for 28 years. Both of my girls graduated from Douglas High School. My grandson currently is a junior in Douglas High School. I served on the Community Emergency Response Team for eight and a half years. I was actually the team leader in the North County, and the safety of the residents of Douglas County and the county itself are a major priority for me. I am also a very conservative Republican and will not raise taxes without a vote of the people, and I will do as I promise.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Danny Tarkanian, and it has truly been an honor and a privilege to serve you on the county commission. When I ran for county commission in 2020, there were some concerns that were raised. Many of them are being raised again, but over the past three and a half years, I think I've put those concerns to rest. I have learned the issues that are most affecting the county, the obstacles that we are facing, and what alternatives we have to solve the problems. I come to the meetings well-prepared. I ask very good questions, but most importantly, I listen to the constituents, what you say either at the meetings or in your public comments through the email. I have taken those and made the best decisions I possibly can for the county. I've kept my promise to keep the county rural, voting against any project that did not fall within the master plan and comply with zoning. I work with my constituents to help solve their problems on a daily basis, and I've been very fiscally conservative, closely monitoring the spending done by the county. I look forward to another four years serving you.
Thank you, Nevadans. My name is Michael Tanner, and I live in Topaz Ranch. I serve as a trustee on the board down there. I believe in honesty, open communication, transparency, and open communication. I see so many problems that could be solved at a lower level, and oftentimes, it doesn't get that. I have 20 years' experience in public matters, you know, state government, and all the things that go with that, including staff, facilities, fleet, and different things that are required to produce. I've lived here since 97, and this has been town for us, and I appreciate the opportunity. Thank you.
Good evening. I'm Nathan Tolbert, and I'm running for county commissioner because I care about this county and the people who live in it. I've invested over 30 years of my life to this community. I graduated from Douglas High School. I've been raising my family here, all the volunteering work that I do with the youth, and I've worked in both the public and the private sectors. In fact, besides running a small business, I've worked for both contractors and developers, as well as for public agencies like the Assessors Office, the Washoe Tribe, the school districts, and the sheriff's office. We residents of Douglas County deserve a representative who's going to be passionate, prepared, objective, and open-minded to the needs of the community. With my knowledge, and more importantly, my understanding of this region, my wide-ranging work experience, and the ability to create and work in a team environment, I am best positioned to take on the role of county commissioner for District Five. So remember my name, Nathan Tolbert, when you cast your vote. Thank you.
Okay. Now we'll go to question number two. We'll start off Mr. Dempsey, and we'll go through it. Remember, everyone out there, if you have a question you want to ask once we get to the audience section, please fill out that question and turn it in. The questions we're going through now are ones that were provided online ahead of time. So we'll start with Mr. Dempsey. It's a little bit of a multi-part question. You guys are getting a little bit more difficult here. What kinds of developments specifically do you support and why? Then also, please explain your position on workforce housing and give examples of ways you think the needs of the community for workforce and other accessible housing can be balanced with the community's interest in preserving its small-town and rural character? And if anybody needs me to repeat that when it gets to them, I understand.
Can you repeat the first part?
The first part of it. What kinds of developments specifically do you support and why? Then the second part of it is, also explain your position on workforce housing by providing concrete examples of ways you think the needs of the community for workforce and other accessible housing can be balanced with the community's interest in preserving its small-town rural character.
I support housing developments that are affordable for people to come in and live here. A lot of our population is retired. Our workforce is dwindling. If we create businesses here, who's going to work them? If our population's graduating high school and they're moving on to college and they're leaving, we don't have the workforce to sustain these businesses. So we need to be very proactive about how we do that. The housing crisis here in Douglas County isn't so much that there's a lack of it, it's a fact that it's unaffordable for most working-class people, and we need to make sure that people can afford to live in this county and stay in this county and not have to commute to other jobs or leave Douglas County to go somewhere else that's more affordable.
Thank you. Mr. McCallum, same question.
And that's a minute, right? Well, I'm in favor of housing as long as it conforms to the master plan and stays within the growth management ordinance. We're currently at a growth rate of 1.6%. I know the growth management ordinance caps at 2%. I would like to keep it within that. I think we have to be careful about housing as it relates to growth that we can't keep up with in terms of infrastructure. When it comes to affordable housing, I'd love to hear the perfect plan that will work. I've looked at the Nevada Rural Housing. They do help with down payments for first-time buyers, but overall, the affordable housing is a nationwide problem. If Douglas County can solve it, every county in the world will be asking for us how. I think we need to talk about it. I think we need to maybe have some kind of meetings about it and bring together people, look at the problems the businesses are having hiring.
Time.
Sorry.
Mr. Frakesis, same question. Do you need me to repeat it?
Just the first part.
First part is, what kinds, what kind of development specifically do you support and why? And then the workforce housing aspect after that.
And workforce housing after that. I am a strong believer in the master plan, and I am a strong believer in the zoning, and workforce housing, I kind of have a problem with it because the taxpayers are the ones that wind up having to pay for all the infrastructure that comes from that, and I don't like to see the taxpayers getting stuckfoot in a bill that other people aren't going right along with. I am a firm believer in the master plan and the zoning as it applies. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Mr. Tarkanian.
I have voted for any project that falls within the master plan and does not require a zone change if it also complies with the other requirements to be approved, such as it cannot adversely affect the roads and traffic, there must be sufficient water, and can't change the narrative of the current community. Two examples of that is, in Saratoga Springs, there was a development that came before us. I voted for it only after nine people came up as residents and complained that there wasn't a second access road. I got the developer to agree to provide a second access road to resolve the constituents' complaints, so I voted for it. I voted against a development off of Riverview in the Ranchos because it was going to create too much traffic on an already dangerous road, Riverview. I don't believe in affordable housing because of subsidized housing, and it's coming from your taxpayers.
Thank you. Mr. Tanner?
I believe in, much like others have said, in a slow, even growth. I mean, if we have the infrastructure to support it, people have got to live somewhere, you know? So we need to have housing, and, you know, the population keeps getting larger, so we need to stay within our plan and make sure our infrastructure, to include roads and sewer and the water, of course, stay within that boundary, you know? And as far as workforce housing, I'd like to see another way, other than just like building something that'll turn into a tenement in a while. I'd like to see something planned real well. I've seen some little FHA neighborhoods that went well, and I've seen some that haven't. So that would have to be something we discuss.
Thank you. Mr. Tolbert?
So I'm going to echo what everybody else has already said, but I have a little more to add to that. I believe in responsible, managed growth, and it needs to adhere to the master plan. But more than that, we're a community, and we're an aging community, and we love this valley. So one of the things that nobody's talking about is aging in place. So not only do we have to maintain some housing for the workforce, if we want to continue that idea of aging in place or staying in this valley with assisted living, we have to start having the conversations about how to get attainable housing. And I'm not, you know, if it has to be subsidized, then maybe that's a discussion that has to be up there. I'm not necessarily in favor of that. But being in the industry, I've found a couple of new trends, that if we can get a developer on board, the whole thing is going to come down to profit. So a builder is not going to build something and not have a profit, so how do we, in this economy, create something that's attainable? Well, you have to be able to develop it affordably, which would be density, and we have to have a construction practice that can be easily attained, and I have some ideas on that, that if you want to ask questions later, I can share you in. But the idea is to start that conversation.
Thank you. Judge?
Oh, actually, no. Mr. Gardner, I apologize.
Well, you're going to let me off the hook on this one, huh? No, I know better than that, okay? The question, I believe, was workforce housing and development that I support. When I look at the charts that I did four years ago, there are still 44 or 5,500 homes that are on the books yet to be built. This board that I'm currently serving on has only approved 175 new homes. So I am a staunch believer in supporting the growth management ordinance that regulates our growth in this county to no more than 2% a year. Now, I'm pleased to report that one of the projects that's coming forward very much in the near future is Virginia Ranch. That's been on the books for some 20 years. However, they are providing a first-time buyer component to that, and I am very pleased to see that. We also have some affordable housing areas in Topaz Ranch Estates and also perhaps in the Ranchos. So I believe we do already have some areas for workforce housing, and that's, once again, the growth management ordinance is paramount there.
Thank you, candidates. We're going to turn to the next question, and Mr. McCallum, you will be the first person to ask or to answer the question. What are the three most important things you plan to do as a county commissioner to help attract new businesses and support existing businesses?
I think we have to look at some of our business areas, some of our strip malls, some of the places. I know in the Ranchos, they're not ideal. I think to attract new businesses, we have to present good opportunities, and a business looks attractive with a paved parking lot, a business that's been painted. I would work with Economic Vitality. I'd also like to talk to Jen Nolder about Main Street Gardinerville, things that we can do to make this county attractive so that people don't look at us and then go to Carson City. I think that's a critical issue for us. I'm very interested in getting involved in that, and I think I'd probably get involved in that whether I was elected or not, because I think it's an important issue for Douglas County.
Thank you. Ms. Frakesis?
I agree with Mr. McCallum in that we need to deal with the vacancies that we do have, but the other thing we need to keep in mind is that we have a really nice business park out in Johnson Lane, and it would be very advantageous to locate some good businesses that are not going to use a lot of our resources, like lots of water and things like that, and actually make that a larger business park. Thank you.
Commissioner Tarkanian?
So first of all, we need to make sure that we keep the tax rate low, which it already is here in Douglas County, and try to expediate, if not fast-track, the application process, the permitting process. They've done that in Story County, and they've attracted great businesses there. We need to have the infrastructure to handle these new businesses, and that's the biggest problem facing Douglas County right now. It's a lack of maintenance and construction of our roads. We need to do a much better job with that, and we need to maintain the quality of life here, which we have just incredible quality of life here in Douglas County. People want to relocate their business in places where they want to live, and this is certainly one of those places. But not just creating, bringing in new businesses, it's making sure the businesses here succeed. Small businesses fail at an alarming rate, 70% over the entire country. I have promoted small businesses with videos, over 100 of them since I've been in office, now trying to bring to the forefront knowledge of what businesses are out there so the community can patronize them.
Thank you. Mr. Tanner?
Yeah, communicate. Many of the things are like the Chamber of Commerce is doing. Let people know what we have here, what opportunities are here, and like Dan said, we've got to show them that we can get people in here, we can help a business, a small business survive, because, you know, frankly, it's really hard. A small business is really hard to keep going. I've heard some of the, all the people I've been out talking to, and it seems to be a pretty common thing, that the permit process, the fire inspections, and all the things that they need to do to get going are kind of difficult. So I guess maybe we could look at streamlining those matters and just trying to help people along that way, you know, and at the same time, you know, keeping our growth manageable.
Thank you. Mr. Tolbert?
So I would, some of this, we need to defer to the people that are experts in this, and so going back to some of the people like Main Street Gardinerville that are working on what is it that takes, what does it take to get a business here, and start having, again, those conversations so that more people than just those select people understand what it takes. And we also need to understand that business has changed. It's not the same as what it used to be. You look at all the empty stores, the box stores, where we simply don't need them because people are buying online, and the paradigm has shifted. So we need to find a way to get back in touch with the times and bring those here. One of the benefits that Douglas County has, a lot of people don't recognize, is that we don't have a business license fee, there's just a fictitious firm name. So there are advantages to coming to Douglas County over Carson City. We just need to be able to promote those and get those into the ears of the proper people. And then again, it comes back to what we just talked about, the last one, is the affordable housing. It's great to bring your business, but if it's not fully automated, where are the workforce going to come from?
Thank you. Commissioner Gardner?
Thank you, Your Honor. So I am honored to be able to serve as the representative by the Board of Commissioners to the Carson Valley Chamber of Commerce, and I take that responsibility seriously. I've been a very strong supporter in, when it comes to new business and supporting our current businesses, certainly the Main Street Gardinerville program and the facade upgrade program is an important aspect of our community in revitalizing some of the storefronts of our existing businesses. In addition to that, I serve as a representative on the Economic Development and Community Development Subcommittee of that, and we are in the process of building a new business toolkit so that businesses that come into our community can take that and have a better idea of what exactly they need to do in order to get a business open in Douglas County. So those are, and I support, of course, the Northern Nevada Development Agency and the Western Nevada Development Agency.
Thank you. Mr. Dempsey?
I think we, as a community, need to do a better job in supporting our businesses that are already here. We see too many of them opening, closing, and disappearing because of the big box stores or online shopping. I understand, I agree 100% with Mr. Tolbert, that business has changed. It's a different industry, and people aren't going to stores anymore. They're ordering online, they're having stuff delivered to them. We need to focus more on our local, small businesses, and rather than attracting other new businesses, we need to focus better on them to keep them in business, to keep people shopping in those businesses, and keep that money here in Douglas County. Thank you.
With that, we'll now go to Ms. Frakesis. VHRs have been a contentious issue for several years. The reduction in VHRs will probably reduce the annual revenue for the county by $1 million, at least. How will you balance the budget without those funds?
I don't see those funds going away. VHRs have not been outlawed. I think we need to work with the residents, especially up at the lake, because that's where the majority of the VHRs are, and try and come to some kind of an agreement. I know that if I have a problem with my neighbor, my neighbor is there every day, and I can deal with my neighbor and work out the problem. If I have a new neighbor every week, it's kind of harder to do that. I think we need to do more of regulating what we have instead of trying to, A, eliminate it, or B, overly expand it.
Thank you. Mr. Tarkanian?
That's a wonderful question that I look forward to answering, because there's so much that has been misstated. First of all, my proposal on VHRs, we ban VHRs the further you got away from the casino and tourist corridor, and you increase the number of VHRs near the tourist area. Because our ordinance states, Lake Tahoe is appropriate for VHRs because it's close to the casino corridor and the recreation activity. Common sense tells you then to have them in the tourist area. So I got a proposal passed. We banned 13 VHRs north of Cave Rock. We increased 16 VHRs in Upper Kingsbury near the ski resort where there's more tourism there. Second of all, you're not going to lose $1 million in tax revenue, even if you banned more of them. You look to South Lake Tahoe, they gained TOT, that's Transit Occupancy Tax, revenue after they restricted and limited the number of VHRs, while at the same time, Douglas County's TOT tax went down. So that's not true that you lose all of them. Some of the people are going to still come and go to the casinos. My paramount concern is always going to be to take care of the residents and make sure the homes are quiet and peaceful.
Thank you. Mr. Tanner?
Yeah, I pretty much came full circle on this. I had a property down in Mono County that I thought, well, in my adventure traveling around with my career, I would rent it out as a VHR. Well, I come to find out that only mammoth could have VHRs. So I thought, I said, that's pretty crazy, because I'm a proponent of personal property. I mean, you know, if you own it, you ought to be able to do what you want with it, right? Well, fast forward a few years, my family rented a home in Markleville, and, you know, we're pretty nice, normal people, but by the end of that weekend, I felt really sorry for the neighbors. So it changed my mind on it quite a bit. I believe that it should be a matter of zoning, not zip code, you know? I mean, because who wants their peaceful life interrupted, you know? And if there was to be a zoning change, I think it should be voted on by the people, not just one commissioner.
Thank you. Mr. Tolbert?
So I also have personal experience with VHRs. My family of five, and when we travel, a lot of times, the VHRs is the only reasonable way we can house all of the monster kids that I've grown. But, I see someone, no. But at the same time, you know, I recognize that how we are and how we're respectful is not the same of everybody. So I agree that there needs to be regulation, but also, we've had a committee that was put together that worked very hard in coming up with some solutions to this that balances my or anybody's right to have a VHR of their property against the right of the neighbor to enjoy the quiet. So my stance on this is let that ordinance work, and if it needs to be adjusted, then we adjust it. But at the moment, I don't feel like there's anything that has to happen one way or another. We need to let this ordinance work and attack it as it comes, and if something comes that we need to push to the ban, then we'll go that direction.
Thank you. Mr. Gardner?
The question was, how would you make up the budget deficit if the vacation home rentals went away? And I would say that unfortunately, that program brings in so much money that there is no way that we could balance the budget without that money, without reducing services, especially in the community services programs. And that is something that I am very troubled by. I believe that vacation home rentals bring an important commodity to our community, especially the tourism industry in the Lake Tahoe area, that cannot be met by the five hotels in that area. And for that reason, that's why they all support vacation home rentals. The program currently draws no money from the general fund whatsoever. However, it does support, through its permitting process, eight positions within our county, almost $1 million. So all of that would have to go away if the program went away as well. So once again, I'm a very strong supporter of vacation home rentals, but also having a very robust code enforcement to ensure the life quality is met by both our residents and our visitors.
Time.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Dempsey?
I also support vacation home rentals. I understand that there's people that come up here, not everybody wants to go to a casino. Some people come up here actually on vacation to relax, unwind, and just chill out for the most part. So we need those. We need that income coming into our county. We talk a lot about freedom. These people buy these homes wanting to rent them out, and that's part of their freedom, and if we take that away from them, we're stripping them a gem of one of their freedoms. Why would we do that? Why would we stand up for freedom so much and then strip it from somebody else? Also, if we kill vacation home rentals, then we're also killing some of those property management companies, and we're losing jobs there, too, also in our community. We need to, we can't do that. Also, as long as they're responsible and using a good property management company that's taking care of those houses, if there's a complaint or disturbance, you contact the property management, they take care of it. If they can't take care of it, notify the local authorities and let them take care of it. That's their job, that's what they're there for, that's what these people are paid to do.
Thank you. Mr. McCallum?
It all comes down to property rights. Many people believe we should choose whose property rights to protect. I believe the board should always consider everyone's rights. The right of the property owner to rent his home as he or she sees fit, whether it's by the day, the week, or the year. We also need to protect the rights of the neighbors to enjoy their properties. I believe we now have good programs that set the rules for VHRs. I believe in strong and transparent enforcement of these rules. A bad neighbor is a problem we've all experienced. I'd rather have one for a weekend than one for a year. We have the rules and enforcement to protect people. I think we should keep vacation home rentals. I think it gives a necessary additional source of lodging to us to support. I think it gives a necessary additional source of, of lodging for, to us, to support the lake. Thank you.
Commissioner Tarkanian, the median age in Douglas County is 56.7 years old. The median age in Nevada is 38.5 years old. What are your solutions to attract the younger generations to Douglas County, and why?
Well, first, I want to make one comment of VHRs without asking for 30 extra seconds. If VHRs didn't cause problems and were so good, they would have approved VHRs here in the Carson Valley, but this board won't, because they're not. Look at, you can't dictate and determine how many people, what, what age of the people that are going to come and live in the valley. This valley is very attractive to a retired age group of people. It's very quiet, it's beautiful, the weather's great, there's a lot of outdoor activities, and that's why you attract a higher age of person here. We can do some things to make this more friendly for, for children, and that's built, creating a better, sports facilities like this Jewel in the Douglas County, the community center, that's one of the reasons why we moved out here, because of that. The school system also attracts better, more kids and so forth. You can do some things, but it's really not the county commissioner's duty or responsibility to try to attract a certain age group over another.
Thank you. Mr. Tanner?
Well, I believe that we are an aging society. We, we need to look out, because, I mean, we're getting there sooner than later. I've been in, my wife and I, we've been pretty involved with trying to recruit younger people, try to, to get to job fairs, trying to do things. I was also managing an apprenticeship program in my past, and, but they need to have a, a way to come here, something to come here with, and that goes back into some of the earlier questions, but, you know, some of the services that we can do for the older people can be something that the younger people do as well. And, you know, we need to look at that. We need to, we need to keep things where kids can survive here, you know? We, I, I grew up in a town where it was a great place to live, but by the time I was old enough to earn a living, the property values had gone up so high that it was very difficult to, to grow up in the little town that I grew up in, and I, I see a lot of that happening here.
Thank you. Mr. Tolbert?
So that's true. The county commission really can't dictate or work to specifically to, to draw a specific age group. However, to that, to that point, we can work and collaborate, and that's like the, my number one thing is communication. All we have to do is communicate and, and find out how great our tourism is at this, at the moment, how much they're trying to promote. You want to get the younger generation here, then promote what the younger generation's doing. You know, the Kalaschny Valley Trails Organization, the, the equestrian opportunities that are here, the opportunity for ranching, there's a lot of things out there that we can market and put out there, and we have to rely on the people that have that ability. And the Chamber of Commerce and the tourism, those are two of the great ways to get what we offer. I mean, why wouldn't you want to live here? I mean, we all are here for the exact same reason. So we just have to get that point out there, and then allow those, those young kids, if we want to call them that, I can't believe I'm calling 30-something's a kid, but, oh, that's my time.
All right. Thank you. Commissioner Gardner?
Wow, wow, wow. What a question. You know, I've never been asked that question. Never been asked that question. You folks need to have more children, okay? Really? I mean, I mean, I, I, I don't know how to dictate how, how to get a, a younger demographic into this community, seriously. I, I, and I don't know how the board can have any impact on that. I, I, I don't know where that question came from, honestly. It's 56 years, and it's actually getting older. It's actually aging, okay? And our housing market, 500,000 plus for a, for a, a small house, and we can't regulate what a developer prices their product at. So I, I'm sorry, I, folks, I just don't have an answer beyond you having more children.
I did not write the question, but I think where the question is coming from is for those of us who have raised children here to adulthood, they can't afford to come back. And I think that's where the, the question's coming from. I, I understand the sentiment of what role the commission might play in that or not, but I think that's where the question's coming from. Mr. Dempsey?
That is a tough question, because you're right, we can't afford the houses that are here as a younger generation. We're going to cities and places where jobs pay better. Wages are higher in other places than Douglas County, and that's because of the industries that we have here. We have very small local businesses with the occasional big box, you know, Smiths and Walmart, but even our wages aren't keeping up with the cost of living in Douglas County. When you come to Douglas County, it's a lifestyle change. You come here for that quiet atmosphere, that quiet life, the no traffic that's we're suffering through now. To, to bring a younger generation here, look around right now for families here. What can we do? What activities are here in this valley for families, other than sports? We don't have any. We don't have any family-friendly businesses here. Everybody has to go to Reno. If they want to take their kids to a trampoline park, it's in Reno. So they have to waste an entire day just to have some fun with their kids, because we don't offer enough here for younger people, and for kids in their 30s, oh, sorry.
Thank you. Mr. McCallum?
I, for one, am willing to get younger if it'll help. I, I grew up in Alameda, California. My house that I was raised in is now probably worth $2 million. It's just a problem, most places, where kids grow up is that they aren't able to stay there, and they move on to where new opportunities are. That's just the nature of our society. I mean, we can't really create, I think we have, we've created a place people want to come to. I don't think that's the question. The question is, they can't afford it. I wish I could have come here when I was 25. I would have loved to come here when I was 25. I was busy working in the Bay Area, and I finally, when I was able to retire, I didn't waste any time in getting here. But like I say, I'm willing to cut down on my age if it'll help the numbers, but I really think it, it's really a hard question to answer. Thank you.
Ms. Frexus, thank you.
It is, it is a very hard question to answer. However, I, I'm going to use my street as an example. When we moved onto my street, my two girls were the only two, two children on that street. It was an older generation. People passed away, people moved, people did whatever, and at this point in time, we've got about 12 children living on my street, and it's not a big street. The areas change as time goes on, and I don't think that Douglas County is just going to die off and we're going to go out of business.
Thank you. We'll now go to Mr. Tanner for the next question. What do you see as the most pressing needs for infrastructure or capital projects in Douglas County?
Roads. Okay? Anybody's driven around lately, it's roads, hands down. But along with that, you know, the whole thing, I mean, when we drive by the, the sewer facility on the north end of town, and, and you can smell it, you know, that's, it's probably underserving a little at that point from, from the things that I, what little I know about that. But anyway, we, we've got to take care of our roads. We've, we've got to come up with something different, you know? Finish the Mueller would be great. I, like people are saying, they're not seeing the freeway in our lifetime, you know, at least us older people's lifetime. But anyway, yeah, transportation's brutal. I mean, I, I'm seeing it all over the place, and I, I would go with that. I, I've got about five more bullet points beyond that, but that's for another conversation.
Thank you. Mr. Tolbert?
So he's absolutely right. The, the roads is, for me, especially being a Johnson Lane resident, is one of the number one issues. We, we simply don't have the funding allocated for the, for the roads. You know, as, as who I am, you know, I don't claim to know everything about everything. So this morning, I was able to get an appointment with John Herb and sat down, and he explained to me what was going on, where the numbers were, and what the situation really is. And so I feel like that's what a representative should be doing, is maybe not accepting, you know, the ego that I know everything about everything, and I, and I don't, and I don't ever, hopefully, I never claim to, but going to go find out what are the problems, what are the, what are the solutions. I've said we should have, you know, some kind of a task force that goes together and starts looking for some of these solutions. I was informed that we had one, and that none of the issues that they came up with or solutions were used or implemented. Now granted, a lot of those had to do with tax increases, which is probably a big reason why, but that doesn't mean that we just have to stop. And that's the problem that I see, is we continue to stop and push it down the road, and with me, that ends, we start talking about solutions.
Time. Sorry? Mr. Gardner?
Thank you. This is right up my alley, and I appreciate that. I, I couldn't have come up with a better question. When I ran for commissioner four years ago, we identified a aging building that was built in 1982, had 19,000 residents in this county. It's called the Judicial and Law Enforcement Center. Sheriff Coverley and his sheriff's department sit in there, and Judge Gregory has a, has a courthouse in there. That is an aged system, and it needs to be replaced, and I'm proud to say that this board approved $51 million in bonds to build a new four, four courthouse justice center about a mile east of the current J-Lex Center, which will turn over the current J-Lex Center completely to our sheriff for his use, okay? That's number one. Number two, we've had a project that's been on the books for some 40, 50 years called Mueller Parkway, and we will break Mueller Parkway in the next three months. We have the funding for it. We've been putting the money away in our budget over into the Regional Transportation Commission, and we have the money to build Mueller, and it came in under budget, and we will be building Mueller and meeting our deadline.
Thank you. Mr. Dempsey?
How many of you have driven through town at 4:30 in the afternoon, and it's taken you 45 minutes to get through town? How many of you have driven right past this building headed out to the ranchos, and it took you 20 minutes to make a left turn? That's unacceptable. We need to do better. Our roads and our infrastructure is in shambles. The problem is, we don't have any place really to build them anymore, because we're going to have to destroy all of this that you see to put new roads in. So the key of it is slowing the county growth right now, until we can get funding from federal government or state government to build a bypass that circumvents from Carson City through our valley, to get the big trucks off the road, to get the people who are just driving through off the roads, so we, the locals, can use them, and it makes our lives that much better.
Thank you. Mr. McCallum?
First of all, I'm very glad to see the justice center being built. The late Cassandra Jones gave me a tour of that facility, and it is crowded, and we very much need the justice center, and I'm glad to see that being done. Of course, the roads are the big, big issue. Mueller Parkway should ease traffic on 399, at least until the park development is built out, then however, then it's not, however, a really long-term solution. And it will be the first road built in Douglas County in a really long time. I believe road maintenance is going to be a more and more critical issue. In the ranchos, we have 45 miles of roads. We maintain them rather well for $750,000 a year. And then the current administration took office, I'm talking about the president, and inflation went crazy. That same, that same maintenance is going to cost $2 million. And that's, if you look at who does the roads, GIDs, the towns, and the county, it's a critical issue. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Frexus?
I am going to be right along with everybody else and say that the roads are the issue. But, but one of the things that I would like to see happen is we need to start taking care of what we already have before we continue to build more. It's, maintenance is, is really important, and you can't keep up with maintenance if you're going to just keep building. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Tarkanian?
From the time I took office, I brought road maintenance and road construction to a forefront and publicly discussed the lack of funding that we've had for it. And I've done what Mr. Tolbert had suggested. I've met with county staff, Mr. Herb, the county managers, and I, we've discussed the reasons why it's happening and possible solutions. One of the reasons it's happening is because of what Mr. McCallum mentioned, the cost of maintaining roads have gotten significantly higher, and the revenue has gone down because of the use of electrical vehicles and so forth. But the other thing that's happened is, contrary, what Commissioner Gardner's phrased, is we have taken the money to maintain our roads to pay for Mola Parkway. We have robbed the road maintenance to pay for Mola Parkway. It's great we're getting Mola Parkway built, but we need to maintain the roads that are out there now. I get more complaints on roads than anything else. And real quickly, the other big problem is stormwater management. It comes out of the general budget. We have to find a fund that can fund that.
Thank you. With that, I think we started Mr. Tanner, so now I'll go to the next question, because you already asked that one. I'm going to ask this question because it needs a little bit of wordsmithing, in the respect that Douglas County created heritage parcels for agriculturists to try to give them an economic option, whether that option be to sell it in order to generate some money to keep their operation going alive, and it's only for larger ranches, over 100 acres. But recently, a situation occurred where some of the restrictions or requirements that are now placed on those parcels kind of make them uneconomically viable. A local rancher made them for his daughter, and they cost over $100,000 a lot to make. What's your opinion of that?
So you're going to have to rephrase that question, because I have, so what's, what specifically?
So what occurred, what the question is?
I'm sorry, I could hardly hear you.
Oh, sorry about that. Let me go ahead and rephrase that. A long time ago, Douglas County created heritage parcels for agriculturists to create. It allows them to create a two-acre parcel, I think every five years, and gives them the opportunity to sell that if they need to sell it in order to pay estate taxes, or for whatever economic reason they need, or if they want to create those parcels to maybe give to their children. Recently, an agriculturist created two parcels for his daughters, and it cost him $100,000 a lot to create, based upon all the rules and things that have been put in place by the county. What are your thoughts on that?
Okay, so that's, I mean, that's right up, you know, my industry. The, the cost of developing, I know that everybody's like the developers are money grubbers and everything else, but the cost of actually developing in Douglas County is very expensive, and so that's why you don't see that many developments coming through. So that's great, the heritage lots was a great idea, but now you go into practice, and you find out what all the connection fees are going to be, what the county, you know, all the, all these different pieces that come in. If you're within, is it 300 feet of, of the existing, you have to connect, and that's hitting people in Johnson Lane just as well, if their septic system goes out. They have to connect, and so I know of a retired lady who spent over $80,000 because her septic system failed. Instead of having to be able to replace the pipes or relocate them, she had to extend the fee, which also extended it to the next neighbors should theirs go by. So, yeah, there, there is issues with our development process, and if you ask me that, that would be where I would look into Title 20, is looking at some of those things and helping people get to what they want to do. Not necessarily developments, but...
Thank you.
The other day, person.
Thank you. That, it is a conundrum, and it's, and it's a difficult thing. I would suggest that we are, as a county, currently in the process of updating Title 20, which is our building codes, and I certainly think that that's certainly an item that we need to take another look at and see whether or not we can adjust that to, to make that more amenable to the people involved, so...
Thank you. Mr. Dempsey?
I can tell you, I, I wish I had that $100,000 problem, because that would mean I'd have a lot more money in the bank. So I don't know if I agree with it or I disagree with it, but again, it's something we can look at to lowering fees for these people, for these families, to save them all some money. That's, I think, the big issue there.
Thank you. Mr. McCallum?
I'm not very familiar with heritage parcels, but I've talked to several ranchers, and the problem with being able to leave even some of their land to their heirs is a problem. We, to keep ranches, we often talk about conservancies and TDRs, areas where ranchers can get money by selling development rights on their land. But as far as heritage parcels go, I would, I would say that we could look to somehow improve the process and lower the rates. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Frexus?
I also am not particularly familiar with the heritage parcels, but I agree 100% with Mr. McCallum that I think we, we need to look at, at ways to try and work with it and, but keeping within Title 20 or reworking Title 20 to deal with the issue.
Thank you. Mr. Tarkanian?
So it's not real clear to me where the increased cost would come from. If it's coming from the professional services, having to hire the, the engineers and so forth to, to map it out, there's not much the county can do with these private contracts. But if it's dealing with the permitting process, or how long it takes to, to go through it, and what kind of studies that need to be done, you have to weigh, and I try to do this in every decision I make on the county commission. You weigh the marginal benefit of the additional restrictions to the cost it is to implement it. And it seems to me that you're taking away the ability to keep farms within the family. And what is the real benefit by having those higher, harder restrictions? I think trying to reduce the cost that may, that, that we have control over is the only solution.
Thank you. Mr. Tanner?
I, I don't fully understand this heritage thing. But I mean, I would think if it's, a ranch goes to its heir, we shouldn't really be involved in it that hard. However, if the heir wants to develop it, you know, there, here we are again, double-edged sword. You know, we wanna develop properly, cause we've all seen beautiful developments that worked and we've all seen some that are a big mess. So, you know, I, I still believe there's way too much bureaucracy, you know, in, in trying to do anything anymore. You know, I've, I've developed a little bit of property and, I mean, even put solar on my home lately. And oh my gosh, you know, so anyway, take a long look.
Thank you.
Can I have a thirty-second rebuttal? You hit me with that hard question right off the top.
Well, the question is, is sir, is I don't think that anybody was impugned individually or your name was called out individually. So no, I'm not gonna allow a rebuttal. If someone was to impugn somebody's name or in a reference to them, I would let them do that. But I don't wanna do that at this point in time, cause it gets us in dark territory. So sorry. I'm gonna turn over the final question to the judge, who of course, he can always overrule me.
All right. Commissioner Gardner, you didn't much care for my last question, so I'm gonna try again. Why are you the best candidate?
Why am I the best candidate? Is this our closing statement then?
It is not.
Why am I best candidate? Well, I, I can say this. Even though I attended the Board of Commissioners meeting for a solid two years in advance of my election, I was still very surprised to learn what I didn't know about the position. Assemblyman Ken Gray, whose endorsement I appreciate, coined the phrase, "Experience matters." And I certainly believe that that holds true in this particular race. My experience as commissioner means I obviously will not expect, experience a learning curve and in continuing in the role for an additional four years.
Thank you. Mr. Dempsey?
You know, I might not be the best candidate up here or the most experienced candidate up here. But I believe I'm the best person for this job. The best person to represent the people of Douglas County. And I'm obviously not the best person speaking into a microphone. But I've had twenty-seven years of experience living in Douglas County. And I wanna keep Douglas County Douglas County. I don't want it to turn into Washoe County or Clark County. I think we need to just keep that rural way of life. We need to slow down the county development and keep Douglas County rural. Keep it so our families and our outdoors enthusiasts can enjoy it. Cause that's what I enjoy and that's what I love about this county. Cause I can go mountain bike anywhere. And we're gonna work on destroying all those trails and all those so we can put up some more unaffordable housing. And we need to stop that and curtail it. And that's what I'm gonna stand up and fight for, is to slow the county growth. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. McAllup?
I've had a lot of experience since I've really started getting involved. I've gone to commissioner meetings for years. I always read the packet, always prepare comments, especially on growth and public safety and other issues. I've, I've been on the Board of Equalization, looking at assessments on property values for the county for six years. Get on the ranchos board. It may not be the county, but it's the biggest GID in Nevada. We have large budgets and we have big projects. And I have a lot of experience dealing with that. As chairman of the ranchos, I'm really chairman of the board of the largest water company in Douglas County. In my experience in the Republican Party as chairman, I've learned to reach out to people to, to be, to serve the Republicans of Douglas County and to look for the best, just the best of this county. What we can make it, I don't think, we, we talk a lot about preserving it, but let's make it better than we found it.
Ms. Rexes?
I'm the best candidate for the job because I absolutely love Douglas County. I am not an expert on all of the issues that come before the commissioners. However, I am more than willing and able to research anything that has been put on the agenda so that I can make an informed decision. I, I can't quote Title Twenty to save my soul, but Title Twenty is, you know. But I am certainly willing to research anything. I am willing to speak to anybody that can help me make informed decisions. Because that's who I am. I will always be prepared to come to a meeting and I will have done my research. Thank you.
Well, I am not only the best candidate, but I am an essential candidate for this county because I bring a great balance to the board. I love to do the things a lot of the other board members don't like to do. And I don't like to do some of the other things. I don't wanna be the president or the chair or the vice chair. I don't care about these powerful committees. I care about working with you, my constituents. I'd love being your voice on that board. I love it when a constituent calls me and tells me, "I have a complaint that nobody else will listen to. Will you please help me?" And I work with county staff and we resolve it. That makes me feel good. It's the only reason why I'm running for reelection. I am a voice for the people here in Douglas County. And I think you've been lacking that voice. And if I'm not on the board, I don't know if there's anybody else that will step up to do it.
Thank you. Mr. Tanner?
As Mr. Gardner mentioned, experience is essential. I have over twenty years' experience on the, in the government theater. I'll try not to stumble this time. But anyway, with one of the largest companies in America. And you can boo his, it was Caltrans, but that's not all because of me. Anyway, I, I hear of things that are, are up right now and I have experience in these things. I mean, I'm, I'm hearing them talk about EV charging stations. I've, I've put a bunch of those in. I've got contacts to do that and I, I know the process from beginning to end. Road repair and maintenance. I, I've seen good and I've seen bad. I've seen the crazy stuff like federal highway dollars. You can't change a curve on a road that's totally washed out by more than two percent. I mean, a lot of insanity there. Developing staff, you know, people for the job. Processes that come along in, in, in what we're doing. Setting processes, you know, setting the things that a, a commission like this should do. Fleet management. I've sat on boards of about anything you can think of. Thank you.
Mr. Tolbert?
All right, so I'll take my own time to clarify on that last issue. I just wanted to iterate that I absolutely support our ranching community because the valley does not stay green if the ranchers aren't here to do that. So the Heritage Parcels was set up specifically to help the ranchers stay ranching. And so when I talk about adjusting the fees, it would be specifically to that use, not to other developers or anything like that. The cost of doing business is what it is. So I didn't want that to be mistrued. So, thank you. Why am I the best candidate? Because I'm the only candidate that's invested my entire life to this valley, short of, you know, prepubescent. So I, I can actually say I'm a product of this environment. I understand how we work with the tribe, how we don't work. I understand how the school system works. I've worked as a teacher. I understand how the taxing works. I worked, my first real job was the assessor's office. So I was born and bred and raised by you in this development, in this community. And I wanna serve.
With that, we are now down with the prepared questions. Now we're going to the audience questions. We'll start off with Mr. Dempsey. Do you think spot zoning is legal or illegal?
Spot zoning?
Correct. Do you think spot zoning is legal or illegal?
One hundred percent unaware of what that is. I'm sorry, I cannot comment on that now.
Okay. With that, we'll move on to the next question.
Okay. Mr. McAllup, a question from the audience. What is your position on expansion of the Douglas Tahoe Airport and installation of a control tower?
I'm in favor of having a tower. I believe the tower is paid for by the FAA. So it is not a cost to the county. And because of the gliders, as well as the other planes we have at the airport, I think a tower just makes sense for us. As far as expanding it, within limits. But I really think, I really just can't stress enough that I think a tower is a great thing for us and would really make it safer, particularly the gliders and the power planes.
Thank you. We'll go to Ms. Rexes. Where do you stand on the Painted Rock Mine?
I, I am very against Painted Rock Mine. However, I, I did go to the meetings about Painted Rock Mine. And at this point in time, what they told us was this is a BLM and an Indian, Indian Bureau of Indian Affairs issue. And there's nothing we can do. I have been speaking with Congressman Amadee and he is trying to help us, but we're kinda hitting some, some roads. But I am very against it and I will do anything in my power to make it go away.
With that being said, just for everybody's edification, that is a proposed gravel pit at the end of Johnson Lane. Person didn't really ask that. Anyways.
Commissioner Tarkanian, a question from the audience. You recently stated you would prioritize roads. Douglas County has no money for roads. What general fund program would you rob to fund roads?
Well, that's the problem. You only find the problems and you, you say there's no solutions. You gotta get creative and work with some different solutions. I have talked with County Manager Davidson and I've talked with John Urb. We've, we've discussed some different alternatives that are out there. One of which is to create a zone when you do new development, that that new development pays for these new roads and the increase in the maintenance of the current roads. There are other solutions out there. But until we sit down there and evaluate all of them, I can't tell you which one's the best. But I have discussed these with county staff and we're looking into it. And we are going to find a solution. It is wrong for this county not to maintain safe roads for its constituents.
Thank you. Mr. Tanner? Do you think VHR should go to a vote of the people?
Yes, I think everything should go to the vote of the people, cause that's who we serve. Okay? Thank you.
Mr. Tolbert, a question from the audience. What is your stance on VHR and growth in the valley? Could you please take a moment and explain your positions? Thank you.
Okay, so growth, I believe in responsible managed growth. And we need to adhere to the master plan. Now, the, the, it was the only reason we would ever consider adjusting the master plan if there's a paradigm shift that's not accounted for now, similar to the box stores not being required. That would be the only reason we would start addressing that, is if there's something like that that, that comes. The VHRs, I am not a, I'm fine with VHRs. I know that we have issues both, on both sides. And my stance is to trust the people that came up with the ordinance that we have implemented that, and let that ordinance work. And should we come to issues that it doesn't work, we can address them as they come. And I know they were held up. The, the computer system wasn't, didn't work at the beginning. The, the code compliance persons in the valley couldn't get anybody up there. Well, that's been rectified. They have a code compliance person up at the lake now. So these issues, as the growing pains, are, are moving themselves forward. So I say let the ordinance work.
Okay. Mr. Commissioner Gardner? So what do you believe is your relationship with community small businesses? And what could be done to improve your relationship with small businesses?
I'm, I'm sorry, I couldn't quite.
Sorry about that. The question is, describe your relationship with local business community and how it could be improved.
Oh my gosh. I, I think I have a tremendous relationship with our business community. Like I said earlier, I serve on the Carson Valley Chamber of Commerce. I also serve on the Carson Valley Visitors Authority. And, and I, previously in a former life, I served, I owned a small business. So I don't think they can find a, a bigger supporter on the Board of Commissioners than myself. Although I think perhaps my other commissioners would argue with me on that. But we need a robust, robust business community. And I mentioned what I'm doing in regards to that.
Thank you. We have more questions from the audience. We're already fifteen minutes over when we're actually supposed to be concluded. This brings us now to the closing comments. So I believe we are in reverse order at this point in time, which would be Mr. Tolbert, if I'm correct.
All right, well, thank you. So I told you earlier that I'm running for county commissioner because I care about this community and the people that's, that live in it. You know that I've invested over thirty years of my life to this community. And I also say that I'm a product of this community. So what you see is what all of you collectively have done with your young people and gotten us, getting us this far. I never left. My other family have moved on and my mom has now come back. So I am invested. I'm not going anywhere, don't plan to go anywhere. And that is a continued investment that I offer. If you read my platform on my website, you'll see that my number one goal is to maintain our community's rural identity. But what does that mean? Well, I can tell you what it means to me. It means taking time to interact with your neighbors. It means smiling when you come up to the intersection and you see somebody across the way. It means holding the door for somebody and actually saying hello. Make sure, and make sure you recognize those who keep this valley green. The ranchers whose families have founded this region have, and long before any of us got here, as Mr. Settlemeyer likes to say, wave to that guy on the tractor with all five fingers as, as you go by. And let's start to take our own active role in that. It's up to us to be that community that smiles at each other when you see each other on the street. It's not just a one-way street. So we all need to recognize that that's the community we want and we all need to work to make that happen. I believe the residents of Douglas County deserve a representative who will listen to their concerns and try to seek out the truth. We deserve our commissioners who researched and prepared for each meeting as a true representative of the people and the people who elected them. You say time? But I got five more paragraphs.
Mr. Tanner?
Thank you for letting me have a chance to get to know me a little bit. I, I have some materials over there that, that say the story. There's also an email address. I'm not super techie with the website, but I, I do, so far, I've been able to answer everything that's come along and it's been a, a pretty good chore. I'm your best choice because I have a lot of experience, a long range of experience in many matters that come up and I've seen what works and what doesn't work. I can promise you truth, transparency and communication and honesty. And I, I just want this to be a, a good place like I grew up in. I believe that the, the kids here owe that and a place they can grow up and raise their families. And, thank you.
First, I wanna thank all of you for coming out here tonight and staying for the full time. It's been a long evening and it just shows how much all of you care. When you run for reelection, it's really an easy decision because you look at what is most important for you that you want from your county commissioner? And you see, does your, the person running for reelection, did he provide that for you? And if I didn't provide it for you, don't vote for me. But if I did, I hope I can count on your vote. If transparency is the most important thing to you, no one's been more transparent than I have. I send out weekly newsletters before Board of County Commissioner meetings and after county commissioners' meetings, telling you what's transpiring with the board. If you care about keeping Douglas County rural, I've done that. I voted against any project that did not fall within the zoning and the master plan. If you care about somebody answering and responding to constituents' problems, I'm certainly the candidate for that. I'm the only one on the board that voted that we should help constituents solve problems when they do. And that is my most enjoyable part of this, this job. If you care about wasteful government spending and you wanna stop it, I'm your candidate. I have scrutinized budgets every single time they come before us. And including, I voted against almost a million dollars in outside consultants, over a hundred thousand of which was to tell the county how to dictate, how to categorize its employees and what we should pay them. If you want a voice for the people, I'm your person. I have stood up and fought for you in county commission meetings, against county staff and other commissioners, at great detriment to me and my relationships with them. If you...
Time, Ms. Rexes?
See, I got so much more I could tell you.
Ms. Rexes?
I would love for the opportunity to serve the, the residents of Douglas County. That is why I am running. I, I have spent a lot of years in the community and I, I hear what people's issues are, what their beefs are, what, what they really like and they don't like. And I am more than happy to stand up and fight for those things. It's going to take a strong person to stand up and say, "No, we can't afford this." Or, "No, this, this just isn't going to work. What other kind of solutions can we come up with?" And I am a strong person and I am willing to work with anybody. I could work with any of the folks on this stage as far as attempting to find solutions to the problems. But the most important part about this is to serve the constituents. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. McAllup?
I have this long page of comments for closing comments. And I think I've pretty much mentioned most of them in my answers. I think it starts with this. You have to look at us. We have this tremendous view. We're looking at a beautiful place. I sit on my deck and I look at Job's Peak. You fall in love with this county when you move here. My wife had never been here and I wanted to bring her for the first time and talk her into moving here. So we got to the top of Kingsbury and she looked over and there was a lot of stove. There'd just been a storm. She thought, "No way can I live here." She looked over that and she saw the green of this valley and she fell in love with it. And we're here for life. This is it for us. This is an amazing place. You, you love it and you move here cause it's beautiful, but then you meet the people. And I've made more friends here in a shorter time than I ever thought possible. I lived twenty-four years in Antioch, California. I hadn't make five percent of the friends I've made here in much less time. It's a beautiful place. I want the opportunity to serve you as your commissioner. I believe in customer service. I believe it. I worked twenty-four years for Safeway Stores, inventory control. I know a lot about customer service. I know a lot about customer service. It's your county, it's not our county. It's your county, and we have to listen to you, and we have to do the best we can for you. That means sometimes taking criticism, and that's okay.
Thank you. Mr. Dempsey.
For twenty-seven years, I've worked for Smiths. I've seen a lot of your faces in that store. You guys know my level of dedication and my level of commitment to you, my customers and the people of this valley. If you choose me in November, I promise I'll bring that same level of dedication and service to all of you, not just some of you, but every single one of you that deserves a dedicated, hard-working county commissioner. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Gardner.
Thank you. Well, first of all, I would be remiss if I didn't thank the Business Council, both Chambers of Commerce, and the Record Courier for once again, for, uh, sponsoring this event. Thank you very much. It's been an honor and privilege to serve you as a County Commissioner this past three and a half years. Prior to my inclusion on the board, there was some questions about the civility of the previous board. I've had the opportunity to serve you as chairman of that board for two years of my, my three-plus years, and I worked hard to bring civility and respect back amongst the members, and worked hard to build a consensus of all five commissioners on issues wherever possible. I have a tremendous respect for public comment, and I will not make decisions, uh, until I hear public comment during the Board of Commissioners meetings. With that said, um, I try to use the guiding force of, "Let's be safe, let's be sound, and let's be rural" in all of my decisions. Does it make our community safer? Is it financially sound and doable without raising taxes? And will it keep our county rural? We've had a hundred and seventy-five homes come to us, of which I voted to approve ten, because I believe in infrastructure first. I ask for your vote. I'm voting for this guy, I hope you are too.
Candidates, thank you for your courage and your willingness to serve. I too would like to thank the sponsors who put on this fine event for the last twenty-two years, and for giving me an opportunity to have a front row seat. You've given us all voters an opportunity to, to hear what you have to offer, and help us make our decisions as we, we go to poll. So, thank you all for this opportunity.
With that, if the candidates could please step back from the podium, Ms. Louie's gonna come up and have some closing remarks. And as I like to say, it's important to remember about Douglas County. I always said this, my dad taught me, my grandfather taught me this, "I don't care where you decided to come from, I don't care if you came here from another country, I don't care if you came here from another state. We welcome you. Just don't turn this into what you fled."
Thank you so much to our viewers at home, and to all of you in attendance tonight filling the hall here. Thank you again to all of the candidates who worked very hard. Let's give them a large round of applause for all their work. Special thanks to the Business Council, the Tahoe Chamber, the Carson Valley Chamber, the Record Courier, and Brian Kopa Photography, your hosts this evening. We worked for months to make this, uh, uh, reality for you, and we appreciate it, the opportunity. Um, I also wanna congratulate the Business Council on their thirty-second anniversary this year, hard to believe. We are, um, holding our Critical Issues Conference on September seventeenth at the beautiful Tahoe Event Center. Please watch the website. All of the speakers are being lined up now, and it is going to be a heck of a day. Thank you to our fabulous moderators. The Honorable Judge Gregory James Settlemeyer and Bryce Klutz, you did a great job, and this is the, uh, modicum of perfection. I appreciate you so much for being our partners. The 2024 June primary will be held Tuesday, June eleventh. To vote, early voting begins this Saturday, May twenty-fifth through June seventh. The debate videos will be available in a few days. Brian's a pretty fast guy, and he will put out the, the professional, um, video, and the Record Courier will publish that, as well as the chambers and the Business Council, and you can watch that over and over. This is the first step in knowing your candidates. It's not the last, correct? Yes. Please go to their websites, please call them, please visit them, meet them, and ask your questions. You have one vote in each of these races. I have always said that if you think you're the smartest person in the room, you're in the wrong room. Leave the room and go to a different room where you can learn. All of you came to this room tonight, and at home, in your rooms, to learn, and we appreciate you learning and attending. Your voice matters, your vote matters.